Alrighty, good evening, welcome everybody to our second meeting of the month of January. Delayed last week due to lack of form, but we're having some important issues to discuss before us tonight. So glad to have everybody here that we need here. So I will call to order and ask that we first stand and be led by our indication by Council Campbell. Now ladies and gentlemen.
Father, we're so grateful for the opportunity to come together and bring a sense of order to the way we've brought this to. We both live there and serve in community as we go forward with organizing and being a parent. Father, we'd like to all of your families that are coming to this festival who are grieving and who are sick or down. We invite you to be blessed, to be honored, to be respected, in the name of God.
Let's make a wish through the choir of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Alrighty, we do have first up on the agenda, a public participation hearing session. And nobody apparently signed up, so we'll move on to the next item of the agenda, which is reports and communication. First up, we have a report from Jason Pridgen, our Parks and Recreation Director. Jason?
Alright, thank you Mayor, Council, it's good to see everybody again tonight. And for about three years now, this has been one of my favorite meetings we've got to do, and there's a reason for that. And tonight, we are, I brought somebody with me, I brought one of my football coaches, not only a football coach, but he's also a baseball coach, his name is Jimmy Harris, and I want to bring him up real quick, come on up Jimmy. Also got my athletic director Andy McLeod back there, Andy, you can come up here too. Y'all know the heartbeat of our entire program as a recreation is the people we get to work with. We're a community-driven department, and without a community, there would be no department. And it takes really, really special people to make our program successful. I've always said it, it's not me, it's not our staff, what makes our department special is the people that we get to work with who volunteer their time to come out and coach our kids and mentor our future generation. And so that's why I got Jimmy here, Jimmy step up here beside me please, he don't know it, he thought he was gonna have to talk tonight. But I want to recognize Jimmy. Jimmy, for sure, has our phone number, cause he calls us all the time. To the point where he says, Jason, I'm sorry for calling you again, but I gotta ask you a question. But that's what makes him special, he's driven, he's motivated, and he is an absolutely fantastic volunteer. And with that, I am, between Andy and myself, we have decided that our 2021 Quincy Cook Volunteer of the Year Award's gonna go to Jimmy Harris. Give you a round of applause. It says, "Thank you for your servant leadership in our program and serving the youth in this community." And I'm gonna give you this and shake your hand. And folks, I'm not, I'm not really lying to you, Jimmy is special, he cares about what he's doing. It's not about winning the games, it's not about losing the games, he is there to guide our kids. I couldn't ask for anything better, this is how special Jimmy is, now I hope he don't hurt my feelings next year. He doesn't coach basketball, his son doesn't play basketball, but he came to Andy and he said, "If y'all need me to coach, let me know, I will be there to do it even though my son's not playing." How special is that? And if we had fifty more Jimmies in our program, I just don't know what could stop us because he is that special to us. And he's relatively young, and probably the best thing he's done is married Tanisha, one of my favorite parents to come through our program. And, and it's just, what, what an honor to be able to stand beside and work with people like this in our community. And I wanted you to know, and I want him to know, he is greatly appreciated, we, we love him. He is that important to us, and that's why we wanted to give him our Volunteer of the Year Award, and that's Jimmy Harris, one more time. Jimmy, you wanna, you wanna say something?
I love coaching, but I also like being a role model. Quincy, it's funny that I didn't know I was getting Quincy Award, Quincy gave me my first chance to be able to be a coach at the city. And I didn't ever know, started giving this award. I say, being able to coach is such a privilege, to have a kid come up to you in the store. Hey, they could coach Jimmy, or a parent say, call you in the middle of the night, at eight, nine o'clock. Hey, my son not doing his homework, and can you talk to him? And she say, and I say, yeah, do your homework, or you cannot punish him at, at practice. Going forward is, it's a relationship build, and that's what keeps us connected in this community, I, I think so. And I'm thankful for the opportunity to be able to coach.
Thank you.
Good, I like, we don't have any press here tonight, so we're gonna take a couple of pictures. We'd love to have council in the picture if that's, if that's able to do that, so we can get it in the newspaper and in all of our online outlets. I've got my phone, Jeremy, if you'll take some pictures for us.
Oh, come on over here. Come on.
Mr. Harris, I, I just will say, I'm sorry that Jason led you here in false pretenses. But we really are grateful for you, proud of you, and hope you'll keep doing what you're doing for a long, long time.
Thank you.
Alrighty. That's the fun part of this job, isn't it? Don't have any council reports this week, but I will go through just a few items, and my mayor's report. Just to keep council and public up to date on certain developments. As our new city administrator, Delgado and I were discussing earlier, we had to come up with a theme for this month. It really would be partnerships, because we are working not just as an organization to try to do things to the best of our ability, but we're, we're reaching out to other organizations, both private entities and governmental entities to try to improve the quality of life for citizens of Lawrence. One of the most exciting ways that we're doing that, that I would like to announce and encourage the public to make plans for, is a new July third parade. We have approached the county, and rather than just this being a simple City of Lawrence parade that only has participants from the City of Lawrence, we hope to build with the, the leadership of Lawrence County, Lawrence County Government, the municipalities across the county, and various private organizations. A parade which will take place on the afternoon of July 3rd, and then that will lead into the second annual Lawrence Lights Night downtown. So, part of that focus is that we encourage the public to build good old-fashioned floats, rather than simply just throwing a few lights and tinsel on a, on a pickup truck or whatever, that's fine. But we really want to encourage different organizations to come out and, and participate, and we'll be handing out awards for that. We want to have our high school bands participate, we want to see representation from City of Clennan, City of Gray Court, Fountain Inn, Waterloo. We, we want this to be a truly cross-county, countywide celebration. And it's just sort of an honor to be able to host it here in the City of Lawrence as the county seat. But we're excited about the possibility of doing that, county is, seems to be excited about participating in that as well. So we're, we're looking forward to making those plans. So hopefully, as the City of Lawrence, we can all get together and plan what the Lawrence City Council float is like.
Now, can we talk about how June came?
Yes ma'am, in, in connection with that, because we weren't able to hold the Martin Luther King Day Parade this year, I hope that that may be able to be rescheduled to coincide with the celebration of our newest federal holiday, GNT. And so we've been working with the organizers of that event to see when we can reschedule it. I, I hope that answers your question. We, we can do, we can continue that conversation. So, moving on, we have been working with a nonprofit to discuss ways we can improve access to better public health facilities. We have some exciting plans along those lines, but we're still continuing discussion there, so stay tuned for that. We're working with the Chamber in Lawrence County to continue the cleanup crackdown that we celebrated last year, where we give folks a sort of, the word's escaping me. A grace period in which to come into compliance with our code enforcement regulations. And then after that period, you can expect that there will be a stepped-up level of enforcement. But in combination with what private property owners will do to clean up their own property, we're looking as a city at what we can do with, with resources, perhaps from the sale of property, to be able to address the houses that need to be demolished. And in doing that, to prioritize the least historic and most dangerous. And we're also working with the Chamber and the Keep Lawrence Beautiful Campaign to celebrate Arbor Day. We hope that City Council will get together next month to plant a tree in celebration of Arbor Day, and to really hammer home the message that we want to, to clean up Lawrence County and City of Lawrence. We're working with the county to be able to coordinate with them and use their roll-off trailers so that we can strategically station those around the city, so that there are folks that need to be able to access a dumpster and make cleanup a little bit easier, instead of going to the landfill. Hopefully, they can go someplace in their neighborhood, so we're looking at how we position those. Yes ma'am.
This would coincide with the community cleanup that we had planned some time ago?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, it'll be a citywide, not just my district, everybody's.
That's great, that's great. So, really, we, we look for that to be an issue of major focus in our, our meeting next month and in the city activities. So stay tuned for that. While we're on the subject of garbage, we do want to make sure that we clearly convey the message that we hear the concerns of the public and sort of dissatisfaction with the way the contractor who helps us with garbage collection may be handling things. But it may be time for us to, as a city, to look at how we can address those issues. I think that is a question that we should study as a city, that's something I've been talking about with our administrator. And our focus is on making sure that we provide that service to the public efficiently, that we provide good service, and that we provide value for the money that citizens of our, our community are paying. And in a way that makes better use of our city resources than we have currently. There's no finalized plan that I'm laying before you tonight, but I, I bring that up simply to say, we're continually seeking to improve, we hear the feedback of the public, and I hope that it's on our radar to be able to address that in the near future. Additionally, sort of along the same lines of, of making sure that the public knows that we're hearing them, we've had concerns about parking in our downtown area. Toward that end, we have proceeded with negotiations which will allow the city to secure additional parking and secure significantly more parking than we have now. And we hope to, to be able to make those announcements soon, but I, I'm sure that will be welcomed news to everybody. In addition to the addition of new parking, we're also looking at ways that we can make the existing parking directly on the square more accessible. And so we've been in contact with Blake Sanders, our sort of on-call planner. And we're looking at what spaces around the square should be designated as handicap accessible spaces, so that we, one, are in compliance with the law as regards accessibility, but two, so that we have a public space that's truly accessible to everybody. So, as we receive those recommendations, we intend to, to move forward with the implementation of those by marking out the, the spaces as appropriate. The last thing I want to share with you in terms of the report is a, an announcement of a new event, a State of the City address. We have contacted Presbyterian College about hosting that event at the Capitol Theater. And we'll intend on doing that the evening of March fifteenth. And at that event, we intend on sharing with the, the public our progress, what we've done, how we've fulfilled some of the strategic goals that had been set by council. And we also want to look forward to my administration's goals as we go into the budget process for the coming year. So, of course, after that, council will have the opportunity to conduct budget workshops and have their own input and give their own ideas, but I'd like to be able to present some of those ideas in a comprehensive way to the, to our council, but to the city as a whole, so please mark the calendars for that. The last thing I'll say is, I appreciate each and every one of you here and the input that you give, the role that you play in our, in our system of government. And I appreciate the desire of each and every one of you to, to have a professionally run quality government here in the City of Lawrence. And I appreciate the way you have helped welcome our new city administrator. I certainly have appreciated his help on my end, but, but I also know that he's had an opportunity to build relationships with each of you, and I thank you for that warm welcome. Alrighty.
As far as your report, I have another question I think is standing asked.
Yes ma'am.
Cause it's the most asked question to me. What's going in the Balow building?
At this point, I don't know that I'm liberty to say, but I, I will say that the building had some issues that have needed to be corrected. And so I think that's, that is the reason for the most current delay. Now that it is in the hands of a new owner, I'll share this. The day that I first spoke with Ryan Holmes about the prospect of a development behind there, and they gave me a, a firm assurance that it was their firm commitment to come to Lawrence. I spoke with the former owner of that grocery store site, and they wanted to put in just about anything but a grocery store. Wanted to talk about medical offices, school district facilities, and, and everything but a grocery store. And so I have heard the public, just as y'all have, that there's demand for a grocery store, we're pushing for a grocery store, and as I understand it from building and zoning, we, we have a commitment from them to bring a grocery store, that's about all I can say at this point.
Thank you.
But I hope the public has the assurance of knowing that it's on the radar, we're working as hard as we can to make that happen. But first order of business is to get the building in shape.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am, thank you for that question. Alright, moving on, next up on the agenda is consent agenda, which includes the approval of minutes and agenda for tonight. Do I hear motion?
Make motion when you approve the consent agenda as printed.
Second motion.
We have a motion from Councilor Lowery, and a second from Councilor Miller, all those in.
Any discussion?
All those in favor, please indicate saying aye. Any opposed, no, consent agenda is approved. Moving on to the next item, it's old business. And I will present a second reading of ordinance one dash twenty-two dash oh one involving a rezoning of a property at three seventy-five Exchange Drive from R three to B four. As council is aware, this is sort of a dotting of the i's and crossing of the t's to make sure that the previous ordinance of, of exchange of property with Dominic Motors is able to really be effective by allowing that business to legally operate there under proper terms. That's really about all there is to it, but I am happy to entertain a motion at this point to begin discussions. We have a motion from Councilor Lattimore, and a second from Councilor Paul, is there any discussion?
Has anything been changed since the first, first reading? I don't think so.
No sir, and this helps us go ahead and, and proceed with the closing on that. So I appreciate council helping finalize this process. That also allows us to close on the property behind the square, which will allow us to begin construction of the splash pad. So we're anxious to get that underway, so we can have kids splashing by Memorial Day. Alright, any further discussion?
Is there, one, one does, he proceeded to get start construction out there for, you have any, you have any plans on whether he's going to evacuate the property, or any kind of date?
That, there's a couple of different answers to that. So my understanding is that because the portion of the property where our splash pad will be constructed is sort of, not presently in the site where he is staging cars. Once the, the closing takes place, we can proceed with our portion of it and allow him to remain in his current location for a time until construction is to such a point where he can relocate on his property. I don't have a, a date or update for you from him on, on his scheduled construction. But we, we want to work with Mr. Dominic to be accom, as accommodating as possible. Alright, any further discussion or questions? Alright, I call the question then. All those in favor of passing ordinance one dash twenty-two dash oh one on second reading, please indicate saying aye. Aye, any opposed, no, and the measure passes immediately. Alright, moving on to the next item, new business. We have a couple of items presented by Mr. Hudson. First is Mr. Hudson presenting the Planning Commission's recommendation to approve a variance for eight lots, that would be lots ten through seventeen at Pine Haven Point. Mr. Hudson?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I have a recommendation from the Planning Commission, and I'll read it, it's Pine Haven Point. On Tuesday, January eleventh, the Planning Commission of the City of Lawrence approved the variance of lots ten through seventeen at Pine Haven Point. Ryan Anderson was here with Century Communities, he presented a request of change of setback requirements of thirty feet on the lots described. The remaining lots within subdivision are unde, are these, are undeveloped lots in this subdivision. The property features a steep drop-off at the back, back side of the property, and they're, they're asking to move the lot forward just a little bit, the big lot, on the setbacks so they have a better backyard for the, the folks. And it's, it'd be ten feet. We're just bringing that to you guys, of that property.
Thank you, Ms. Hosen.
That's a queen circle on the backside, queen circle, community of that subdivision.
Do I hear any motions to begin discussion?
I make a motion, we accept the Planning Commission recommendation for the eight lots at Pine Haven Point.
We have a motion from Councilor Lowery, and a second from Councilor Lattimore. Are, is there any discussion or questions for Mr. Hudson? We have a motion for councillor Lowery and a second councillor Lattimore. Are, is there any discussion or questions, Mister Hudson?
Let's just make them build.
And actually, on, on this property, the lot line is off the street a little bit, so it, it hardly be noticeable.
Hardly be noticeable.
Yeah, and makes all the houses look same.
Is that the entrance worm? I know, it's all in the bag.
It's the last of the, the sites that they have. It's eight, eight sites and that'll be full. You know, at the front, there's nineteen.
That's gonna do it? That's all there is left?
Pine Haven Point, that'll be it.
Jeremy, one question I have is um. Anytime we deal with a variance, I think we have to be concerned with whether or not we're opening the door for anything else down the road. I wanna make sure we don't uh have any unintended consequences. So do you see any possibility? With granting this variance that would, that would pose any problem in another circumstance?
I don't think so, just because the, the, um, the lot line is off of the street line. So it will actually look like it's still. A thirty foot setback. The, the way the street was, was brought in there is not enough that. And these homes, you, where it's set, it, it, they'll still be in line. You know, there won't be any houses further or closer to the street than the, than others. I don't think it'd be very noticeable.
As long as, no, it's big there, just there, right there.
It will not.
Okay, uh, now I'll ask a question. What about? The, the ones that we're going to talk about on, um. What's that? By the old highway department and the ones that, that, the ones that's coming up on State Coach. Not State Coach though, uh. Uh, and he was, he was like, the man was asking a question, you think we have problems with, with anything else that may come? Like, would you think that would be it? Because they was asking, oh, uh, wasn't it asked for something with the, the, uh. The inches way, uh, uh, something that was asked.
Yeah, she was asking, um. For a smaller lot, but um, as far as I know, she, that, that property's not even secured. So she doesn't have that property.
Okay, okay.
They do own, I guess we say, that there's some apartments over there on top, top extension. That, that group does own those apartments now and they're, and they have been listed for that.
So just to be, just to be clear. The motion before council is to adopt the recommendation of the planning commission. And so the, the planning commission's recommendation. Is specific in the, the reasoning that it lays out, so we're not talking about changing lot sizes. Uh, anything other than simply. Reducing the setback from the street.
Correct, yes. The lots will be the same size, the, the same width. Distance from each, each home will be the same. It's just moving the home forward so they'll have a, a bigger backyard. Because it.
Yes, so the, this would actually make the, those lots more livable than it would be. Correct.
Where it would be unsafe for children?
I have asked, I, I asked um Century Communities to, to put a fence up. It is a significant drop, but it's, it's, um, it's sloped in such an angle, I, I, I asked them, would they be interested in putting the fence up? Yeah, they're, they're, they're good with anything.
Counselor, uh. I think we would have the ability uh to accept the planning commission's recommendation. With the added provision that a fence be. Installed for anything safety if, if that were councils will.
I do too, because that is.
The, the property backs up to a sewer right away, so it's a conditions, uh, right away there.
Mister Lowery, would you be interested in amending your motion?
I would, I would have been able to include um that it require a construction of fence along the backside of each of the lots.
Any objection to Mister Lowery amending his motion? Alright, hearing none. Um, is there any further discussion, so, man, is there any discussion? Uh, further discussion regarding this night? Hearing none, I will call tho- all those in favor of uh accepting the recommendation of the planning commission. With the additional provision that a fence be installed. At the rear of each lot to protect safety. According to the current standards in place for such fences. Uh, all those in favor, please indicate saying aye. Any opposed, no, and that variance is granted. Thank you, Mister Hudson. And next we have a second recommendation. Regarding the development of property at co- corner of West Main Street and Stagecoach.
Okay, this will also be January eleventh, planning commission meeting. Uh, recommendation from planning commission, property of corner of West Main Street and Stagecoach Road. Please let, uh, set this letter of recommendation for city planning commission regarding proposal of new homes or new housing located at Stagecoach property. On the corner of West Main and Stagecoach Road. The planning commission received, received a presentation from Blake Lautermilk. And for the development of this property. Uh, the property has current zoning of R two, uh suburban residential. Um, the zoning purpose foster and preserve protect areas of the community which the principal uses land for detached single family. Dwellings and related support facilities. The proposed housing construction conforms to the zoning designations as is. The subdivision will consist of approximately three hundred and eleven homes. Uh, single family detached homes with square footage of fifteen hundred to two thousand square feet. The lots um meet the specifications as required by zoning. These homes are, are predicted to, uh. To have a listing price of two hundred to three hundred thousand dollars. The neighborhood will include amenities, sidewalks, streetlights, parks, open spaces. Uh, possible pool, uh, neighborhood clubhouse and these amenities most likely take place of some of the lots currently designated for home sites. Um, that will reduce the number of houses in the community. Uh, the subdivision will be built approximately three phases, uh, completing eighty to a hundred homes at a time. Uh, traffic study will be required by S, S C D O T. Developer and builder must comply with D O T requirements to ensure safe roadways and easy, easy ingress and egress from the developer. Uh, the city of Lawrence two thousand fifteen comprehensive plan highlights this area in the city with highest. Concentration to single family homes in a upper price range. Uh, the proposed subdivision will be comparable to other neighborhoods and surrounding areas. The plan also recommends extending sidewalks and adding period lighting along the thoroughfare of West Main Street. As long term goals for this area.
And Blake is also here tonight. We have. Some things in front of you. We have some, uh, renderings for people. Get to that point where there's questions.
Thank you, Mister Hudson. Uh, at this point, I'll entertain any motions.
That's the day to fund the Miami Commission?
Thank you, councillor Miller. Is there a second? There's a second councillor Lattimore. Uh, is there any discussion?
I was just concerned, but I seen here, I guess, where the uh D O T's gonna do a study on that turning off seven six, so that is. They will need some turn lanes in there and that's already a bad situation right there where that red line is. Uh, but uh, I see it in here, it says. That kind of uh D O Ts wanna do some study and make sure that problem is corrected.
And I'm happy to address that if, if you'd like. Um, we'll actually be doing the traffic study. It'll be for D O T requirements, so at the end of the traffic study, they will evaluate. You know, our traffic engineer's recommendations, um, whether that's a turn lane or signal or whatever that, whatever that may be. Uh, coming out of that traffic study, yes, sir. There's a requirement from D O T regardless of what you guys decide. I'm happy to answer any other questions that you have to.
You still don't have no turnaround.
Sir?
You still don't have no.
No roundabout? Roundabout, yeah.
Can you please uh tell us a little bit more about um your plans for sidewalks, streetlights, et cetera? Would those be sidewalks on both sides of the street?
If, if, if you guys prefer that, I think we're, we're willing to accommodate both sides. Typically, our standard is on one side of the street. Um, that's typically what we do, but um, we certainly, certainly entertain that if that's something you guys would like to see. Cause at the end of the day, we wanna be a good partner to the community. Um, and so, you know, if that's something that. Uh, having, having that and having places where it's a little more active lifestyle, it's kind of a little.
Well, well sidewalks be put on uh seventy-six because I know several years ago, I had a state. I sent a letter down to the state to do a study about getting sidewalks up to the high school. Down through seventy-six on into town. And that never happened. And I had a representative come down here and she wrote to me one day, she said, I can't understand why we don't already have sidewalks up there. Uh, we got kids from the high schools running track up and down that road. When they're, there's, there's a lot of people walking all the, all the way up to the high school. And sidewalks are definitely needed on seventy-six all the way down to the, uh, Lawrence County middle school.
Both sides.
Both sides. Just needed fast.
Man, we, I don't, you know, I don't know that we can address the entire problem. But one thing that we could do, and, and there again, uh, we'd like to, if we can, make sure we keep the brick fence. As it is, um, that's the intent. Um, but what we could do is something along the lines of making sure that there's provisions. For the sidewalk uh in front of this, so that we don't build everything right up until where there's literally no room. Um, to do one. So, you know, we'd definitely be willing to do that, allocate, you know, property to make sure that there's enough room for that. You know, we're doing double sidewalks and the, inside the subdivision would be difficult for us to then go out on the highway and do that as well. But, you know, I think, I think definitely at a minimum, providing the space for, for that, should it ever come through. So you're not locking, locking, you know, the homeowners association in from never getting. Um, because at the end of the day, having been a consulting engineer for fifteen years, if you don't do it now, it's very difficult. To do it on the backside. Um, you know, just degrading operations and utility moving and all of that stuff that would have to be done. In order to do it later.
Well, that's one reason I'd like to bring it up now, because we build sidewalks. I see them where we're, where they come in here and build them, where people never walked on. You take through seven, E seventy-six out towards Walmart on both sides of roads, people don't walk down sidewalks out there. So we need them, we need them where we got, know we got people walking and people using. Yeah, short distance there, but uh, but we need them all the way, all the way up.
Except for those apartments across from the road, cause we adjust, we ask for that sometimes, so I was gonna say it. Because those are, those, those two are too close to ride the phone. And they have to walk or either we went through and got, tried to get churches and stuff and take the tickets and stuff. Or they cross over together, so that, they are definitely needed.
Counselor, I do wanna point out the fact that um, this is. This has a R two zoning and the, the lot widths here are a minimum of um seventy feet. And so I, I think one of the concerns that we, from time to time is that we wanna grow, but we don't want sort of a uncontrolled cancer. So that sudden growth, so uh, and, and to have neighborhoods with, you know, postage stamps, househouses. So I, I appreciate the effort here to um, one abide by our current zoning standards. No, no request for any zoning change or variances is involved here. And to build a neighborhood with some of these infrastructure elements that will. Will really stand the test of time and to build it in a phased way so that um. You know, this, this, the school system and other public. Services sort of. Um, accommodate to growing population numbers that we're, we're able to keep pace with the new neighborhood. Thank you.
And just one thing to note on that. CPW is actually gonna conduct a study for the sewer, a basin study for this project. And they've asked us to contribute to that study, um, because our project would be a part of any kind of upgrade that would need to happen. As a part of their sewer infrastructure goes. Um, so we're also participating in that as well.
You would be served by CPW electricity, not Duke or anything out that way, correct?
I believe that's right.
Any other further discussion, councillor?
Yeah, I would wanna make sure, I mean, CPW should be covering this. I know.
And Lawrence County Water and Sewer is served for water. A hop, skip and jump in there as well.
Yes, we wanna make sure that this is um served by our. John was, okay. They got it all covered.
Okay, good, good. I think councillor Lowery and I were discussing just prior to the meeting, you have those pretty gates by the, it's the intention to keep them. Uh, they've been there as long as I can remember. Being, being able to see something that was begun so long ago actually completed is. Nice. Any further questions? Alright, if, if there is no further discussion, I will call the question. All those in favor of uh accepting the recommendation, recommendation. Uh, the planning commission is submitted, please indicate saying aye. Any opposed, no, and the measure is approved.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Appreciate you coming. Alrighty. Uh, the last thing we have before us is an executive session. Regarding the employment and compensation of city employee in negotiations incident to a proposed contractual agreement. At this point, I would entertain a motion to executive, enter executive session and. Go back in public section and call the chair. We have a motion and a second. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor, aye. Any opposed, no. Alrighty, hearing none. Thanks, everybody. If you're in public, we'll see you later. If we're in public, we'll see you later.